Good evening. Sorry for the delay. We had our Career and Technology students downstairs showcasing what they're doing at our campuses, and I and the rest of us all lost track of time, so I apologize. Good evening and welcome. My name is Taylor Kingman. As President of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District, I would like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's pre-agenda board meeting. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of SAISD. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most of the items on our agenda this evening will be discussed tonight and voted upon at a regular board meeting. As members of the SAISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, we do have a public comment item in our agenda that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team on an item that is not on our action agenda or an action item on the agenda an opportunity to do so. Please provide your name and contact information and the specific topic you wish to address on the public comment form located in the back of the room. Please listen carefully and comply with the following rules so that we can move through this part of the meeting efficiently. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. The district will provide an official timekeeper. You will be notified when your time is up. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time, and comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Comments are limited to the specific topic you indicated on the form you filled out. And any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee, decision, or operational issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. If you have a pending grievance being processed by the district, please remember you're not to speak on that grievance during public comment. Also, please understand if you offer public comment that the board cannot reply to you except to thank you for your comments since the matter has not been posted for discussion. I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones. Again, thank you for being here and for your support of SAISD. We do have a quorum this evening. Our entire board team is present, and with that, I'd ask you to join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance in the United States and Texas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored protestant, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state under God, one indivisible.
Our next item is our public comments. First up is Mrs. Ginger Moore. If you please come and use the microphone. Thank you.
Hi. Yes, Ginger Moore, good evening. I live in San Angelo, Texas, and I was also one of the ones that went to Texas Blue Bonnet in Austin to testify for Texas Blue Bonnet curriculum in November. And so here I am again, and I wanted to quickly tell you why we should hit the schools and parents choose Blue Bonnet curriculum. It's paper and pencil printed materials. It's cursive from second to fifth grade. It's paper instructional journals, activity books, and readers. There is no AI screen time, so you can save money on your children's iPads. Parents may easily view the curriculum online. Family support letters on every unit to share at home. Patriotic stories and historical documents. Complies with Texas Informed Patriotism Act HB 4509. Conservative values incorporated. Biblical references for literary and historical value. Scaffolding learning K through fifth grade. Focus on phonics K through third grade. Supports all learners, disability is gifted and with language issues. Incorporates Texas values and histories. Teacher ready and covers 100% of the Texas TEES, which I'm not fond of. Provides teacher resources and instructional guides. Enables teachers to personalize lessons for students. HB 1605 passed into 2023 for open educational resources. The state of Texas owned with state Board of Education oversight. Blue Bonnet is free, plus you receive $60 per child to pay for the paper and pencil materials. The Amplify materials currently cost most school districts about $200,000 for materials. If the school board approves and implements, it can be implemented by August 2025. And I just want to encourage everyone to consider it seriously because my big issue is the children are supposedly learning cursive in second grade and in third grade put on an iPad. So I'm very much against iPads for our children. It rewires their brains. It's not good for their eyes, and we need to get our children back to paper and pencil. And I think that's what parents want. Parents really want us back on paper and pencil again. They do not want, they want to learn like we learned. I learned cursive from the nuns, so I can assure you. And when I wrote that, the pen wouldn't go right, so I'm sorry. But yes, I just very much would like to encourage everyone to consider Texas Blue Bonnet as a source, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Next is Mrs. Karen Best.
Speaking to the Blue Bonnet curriculum, I've had a, I guess, a market opinion with regard to performance on the taper, which indicates the star scores. And at the last board meeting, I brought those up, and they continue to be a source of concern. When we talk about the star scores and the number of our third, fourth, and fifth graders who are scoring at meets grade level or above, for our third graders, only 44% of them are on grade level or above. Our fourth graders, 43%. Our fifth graders, 48%. And so it seems that from grade to grade, we continue to have issues with regard to improvement and remediation. When we look at Blue Bonnet, I know there are a number of issues with Blue Bonnet having to do with separation of church and state. I leave that to other speakers, if there are any, probably next week. But from my point of view, and I'm just a mom, okay, and a concerned citizen who also watches the school-to-prison pipeline that seems to be alive and well in San Angelo. One of the things that we have to do in our early grades is make sure that we remediate those reading, writing, and arithmetic scores so that at high school, we see higher EOCs and people walking across that stage with a diploma, not just a certification. In order to do so, we're going to have to have a curriculum choice that remediates and actually does what it's supposed to do. When I look at the statewide scores, it seems that since TEA has been approving curriculums for school boards for standardized curriculums and testing, the state seems to be suffering at what I would call an academic dog chow. Doesn't matter which one you choose, it's failing the state. Every school board votes on a different curriculum, and still, it's not serving the majority of our citizens in schools. And I know you're limited in what you're able to choose. I have 32 seconds left, and so with that, I will just say that I can't get my hands on the curriculum, and you can't either, okay? You're going to vote on a curriculum that you haven't seen and hasn't been put before your hands. Examples have been. Likewise, those who have seen it have remarked that for those early third graders, there are only six books read over the course of an entire school year, and if you've looked at the one that's online, it's effectively pablum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Best. Next, we're going to have Mr. Virgil Pasetti.
My name is Virgil Pasetti, Concerned Dad. I'm here to talk about the bond that you're voting on tonight. Very concerned that you wait till the very last day to do it. You do it on a pre-agenda meeting. You're trying to run it in May, which is our least voted, the least turnout. Ed Vantage told you that only 5% of the community typically shows up, and of that 5%, most of them are over the age of 65, and most of them are higher educated, so it's easier for them to understand the facts. So you're going to try to hang us with $400 million bond that I'm going to be paying on until I'm 78, and my son's going to be paying on for 30 years. And you're going to do it when there's the least amount of turnout. On top of that, you put together advisory panel, and you said, "We're going to let the community to decide where our focuses are on," but you failed to disclose to them what happened to that school. You knew September 20th what happened, and you didn't tell anybody in that advisory panel what happened. So everything they did potentially is tainted. Don't you think those 75 people knew that you forgot to fix that foundation and it failed? That instead of focusing on athletics and other things, they would have been very hyper-focused on elementaries? But you didn't tell them. And then I had to file three complaints with the Attorney General to finally get you to release it. And now you want to hang us with $400 million. Plus the fact that you were late on McGill, you were late on Fannin, $465 a square foot on Fannin, you overpaid, and that was a $20 million project, and now you want us to give you $400 million to the same team that was involved with both of those being late. Plus, we have someone on the board that is going to benefit from this. They said, Park Hill said that of that $400 million, that $60 million of it's going to be plumbing. Well, where are all those plumbing supplies going to get? And if it's going to be at your business, you probably should recuse yourself because it's not fair to vote on something, hang us with $400 million when you have a financial benefit. Then we have another member that won't even answer the people of where that school failed, who's not going to run again because the Vice President is out trying to find a replacement for her, and so she's going to vote on this now? Wouldn't even answer any of the questions for why did that school fail, but now you're going to hang us with $400 million. The bond is needed. It needs to be focused on the elementaries and some of the other things, not athletics. And it certainly doesn't need to be voted on in May when the least amount of people turn out, and you know that. This is not the time. And the fact that y'all are willing to take all these shortcuts and potentially take the liability of doing some things you shouldn't have, it's on you.
Thank you, Mr. Pasetti. Next, we have Mr. Robert Hughes.
My name is Robert Hughes, and I'm a local San Angelo taxpayer and a product of the SAISD school system. I'm here today to oppose the adoption of the Blue Bonnet curriculum for our K through five students. As I'm sure many of you are aware, one of the core fundamentals of the Blue Bonnet curriculum is to inject biblical teachings into Texas classrooms alongside traditional core studies such as math, science, history, and social studies. The state of Texas is also offering an incentive of $60 per student in order to adopt this curriculum. Now, I am no lawyer, but to me, this sounds very much like this violates the Establishment Clause of the First Amendment of the United States Constitution, which bars our government from establishment of a religion. Additionally, this also appears to violate multiple aspects of the Lemon Test as set forth by the 1971 United States Supreme Court case of Lemon versus Kurtzman. With that said, how can we expect our government, history, and social studies teachers to teach children about the United States Constitution when the very classroom that they sit in is in direct violation of the First Amendment? How are we not violating the civil rights of a Jewish student, or a Mormon, or a Jehovah's Witness, or a Muslim, or an atheist? And how does this not violate the rights of taxpayers for their children to be exposed to the religion of their choice? If parents want their children to have a biblical education, shouldn't it be taught by an expert in a church, in Sunday School, or Wednesday Bible study, and not by a teacher whose salary comes from taxpayers, and whose own civil rights may be violated by being forced to teach religious texts that they themselves do not agree with? How are we not violating the rights of Christians who would prefer that the Bible be taught in a specific way? I would also like to propose a question to all of the Christians in the room. How would you feel if it was any other religious text that was being forced upon your children in the classroom? Lastly, from a broader perspective, I would be willing to wager that a lawsuit that may result from adopting such a curriculum would end up costing the school district and San Angelo taxpayers far more than the $60 per student that we would gain for selling out our constitutional rights. Surely, SAISD and our city can find some other way to come up with that money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. That concludes our public comment. No, ma'am. The next, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Dindell to conduct our Finance and Audit Committee workshop.
Thank you, Dr. Kingman. We have several reports tonight. First off is our management oversight report on maintenance, and Mr. Kennedy is going to help us with that.
Dr. Moran, Dr. Kingman, board, thank you for giving me the opportunity to do this. This should be quick, but I can tell you, we are in a lot better shape than we've been. Part of our management oversight is to try and help people understand what we're doing. This is our organizational chart, which we go through that every year. A.J. Turner, he's right back here. He's my maintenance supervisor. He was kind enough to come today and support me in this. We are doing good things. You know, last year, when we got away from synergistics, there was a concern that we weren't going to be saving money. Wanted to give you a little update and an overview on that. You know, we've got a lot of comfort issues. We know that we have old air conditioners. We know we have old heating. We know we have some issues there, but we're trying to resolve those, and we're doing a good job. You know, you can look at the number of comfort issues addressed, how many work orders are submitted, 600 HVAC work orders. Those largely have been completed and fixed. Lot of them are Andover controls issue, and you can see the chart. The orange is the old Andover controls that we're currently using that we've, if we hadn't been doing maintenance, those controls would not have been here for 30 years plus. That's pretty good, right? 30 years on controls. Pretty good. And then we have some new Schneider controls that were on Lincoln and Glenn, and then we have some Honeywell Wi-Fi's that are just really simple Wi-Fi's, and they work great as well. Look at the bottom number. That was our cost savings. It's reported every year from synergistics what they had saved. We're still perfectly in line with what they were doing. The only difference is our cost for electricity on some of the new buildings is a little bit more, even though we have an energy contract. Anytime we get a new meter installed, it's at a current rate. So the new McGill, the new Fannin, the new technology, those things are coming at a little bit higher rate than what we had previously. And you can see, you can look at the last 12 months, pre-energy, and last 12 months, we're still saving a lot of money. Work order comparison. 7,536 work orders completed this year. It's crazy. If you will look at the 2023, the center column, you see the outstanding work orders that were still there. There was 124. When I did this, the last two weeks worked on this PowerPoint, we had 16 work orders open. We are hiring really good people, and thanks to the board for the raises because you're going to see in a minute the effects that the raises have helped my people. Here's our staffing. Five short in maintenance. Before the raises, we had 16 short. We have one journeyman electrician, one plumber apprentice, two HVAC technicians, and one electrical journeyman. That's all we have now. We were hurting pretty good. Grounds, we have two grounds positions. The number that's astonishing to me is five custodial positions. We've been, you know, when we had our King's Clean contract, we could not fill positions. We are starting to fill positions. Five is the shortest number that we have been short since I've been here. Here's a few of our work orders that happen a lot. If you can see, on the left side, you see playground equipment. It's a common thing. It deteriorates, and it's in the sun. Our plumbing, I cannot ever remember any place that I've ever been that we have water this bad. We have very bad water, and I hate to say it, it just eats all of our plumbing pipes and faucets and valves, just eats them up. These are some of the nice things that we've done. San Angelo Stadium, we painted that. Some people were saying, "Oh, we're not doing one for the other." We've gotten our baseball, softball fields, they are looking great, grounds, they do an excellent job. They've got our fields looking extremely good this year. One of the projects we completed this last summer, when we moved a lot of the special needs over to Bonham, we had to build cubicles. Now we have four offices that were in classrooms. Those were all done in-house, total remodel, very cost-effective to do that instead of trying to contract those out. Oak CTE, we've talked about it, everybody knows that we did some remodeling over there. In the very center picture, you see the exposed, well, actually, you see the exposed wall there. That wall, we thought that since it was a metal building, that we were going to be able to build the building, and it was going to be just fine. The only issue we had is when we went to get all of our permits, we found out that the fire marshal was going to require a firewall there. It took a lot of duck work, it took a lot, but it completed to be two really nice classrooms and good for our nursing and CTE programs over there. Some of the things that we've done. CHS Portables project, this was a big effort between Jason Henry, myself, Park Hill, the city, the fire marshal. There was tons of people involved. Most people don't realize how hard this project was complete. But it's complete, classes are meeting in there, and it turned out to be really, really nice. We totally remodeled from top to bottom, two of the portables, and then did some painting and some carpet and some other things on some of the others. But that was four portables that we're currently meeting in. Wanted to show you, we celebrate our staff. A.J. and I are very, very fortunate to have great people working for us. This is one of our cookouts that we have. We try to do two to three appreciation cookouts or something every year. People are happy. Raises helped. You have no idea. We thank you for those. And then this Christmas, we had a really good time with, this is our mariachi group. What's cool about that is I had everyone from my department except two that just couldn't be there there. There's around 140 people there. We appreciate our staff, and we appreciate what the board does for us. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Kennedy?
I don't. Wait a minute. I just have to say, Mr. Kennedy, your department, it's so heartfelt when I go, and some of our students are working for your department, and it's not an eight-to-five job because we get texts when y'all are working. It's Saturdays, it's Sundays, it's all the time, I feel like. Every time I get a text, I'm like, "Oh, no, a pipe busted." But I personally, from the board, I know, want to thank you and your people, all of your people. And you're right, they're smiling. At football games, when you're serving them dinner, I've never seen them not, just happy to be there. So I appreciate you and your team.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Appreciate it. Next up, we have Mr. Walters, and he's going to give us a summary of findings on the TEA Intruder Detection Audit.
Good evening, Dr. Moran, Dr. Kingman, and members of the board. As always, thank you for your time and your efforts for the school. Need to inform you of our Intruder Detection audits, month of January. We had two IDAs. Findings and corrections or corrective actions, if any, have been addressed by the campus administration. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Walters. Next up, we have a facility update, and that's going to be presented by Dr. Moran.
Thank you, Mr. Dindell. The presentation that we're going to share with the board this evening is a concise overview of the facility work that's brought us to the agenda item this evening with a consideration of a bond proposal. And so I'll move fairly quickly through some of this, but we know that the mission of San Angelo ISD is to engage all students in a relevant and inspiring education that produces future-ready graduates. It's really about addressing the needs of every student in our district, regardless of where they come from, the level they're on, the grade level they're on, or their needs. We want to address every student and grow that student. And as we do this, the board is aware of several things that have happened throughout the fall. Our demographer showed declining enrollment as a trend, and I don't think it's a secret, but it's certainly worth revisiting. In fact, more than 2,000 students fewer than the past 10 years. We also know that the majority of the growth in our community is in the aging population. The more experienced and mature San Angelons continues to grow, but our younger population of incoming kindergarteners is shrinking, and the demographer points to fewer births. And I think it's realistic to say that there are young parents or parents. And I think it's realistic to say that there are young parents or parents that have young children that are exploring different options for their children. And that's a national trend. I think 4% was the number that I've heard several times presented as a reduction in kindergarten students entering public schools. And so our demographer presented some models that show growth over the next 10 years, and certainly something we as a district will need to pay attention to. You can see that the more the more conservative, uh, prediction would be that we would be at 12,250 students in 2034 with as low as 11,192. We're currently just around 13,000 students. Historically, the community of San Angelo ISD has passed only one of the past seven bonds presented to the community. The last was 2008 with work performed across the district. The total bond at that time was $117 million. So let's take a quick look at the facility study and the process that has been under ongoing since May. You can see in the timeline there, uh, the work that's been done by month and a very thorough process that's been going on. But what it revealed is that we have composite age of buildings that's worth us taking note of and mentioning. Now, the composite age takes into account the old and new buildings on a campus and provides what you might call an average age per square foot. And in San Angelo, you can see that about a quarter of our buildings are 60 to 80 years old and 43% of our buildings are 40 to 60 years old, meaning that 67% of our facilities have a composite age of more than 40 years of age. And probably more importantly to note that none of our buildings are 0 to 20 except for the Fannin and McGill, uh, expansions that were not funded through a bond but through, uh, federal relief funds as a result of COVID. And we'd like to compare ourselves from time to time to area districts about our size. And so we look at Abilene, and you can see that Abilene has about 27% buildings, 0 to 20 years of age. So we are behind when compared to Abilene. And we also know that deferred maintenance is a real issue for us. And that's a result of aging facilities that have not been replaced and failure of bonds by the community to address needs that we have. These numbers were mentioned earlier this fall, but you can see it's a very large number, 415 million. If we did nothing as a community, we would have to address in the next five years, uh, deferred maintenance in that amount. An example would be Central High School. And as we look at Central, uh, we can see, and I think the built year really should be 1957, but we can see that, um, the number of students around 3,000, 16 buildings on 47 acres with 206 exterior doors. But when you look at that building and we use a heat sheet to kind of grade out the, uh, deferred maintenance over a period of a few years, you can see by 2033 where Central will be. In fact, some of those buildings are red now. And so, uh, that's an important thing. And we did this for each of our buildings. Glen is another example, built in 67, uh, built at that time, a very state-of-the-art facility, built in the round, an open school concept. Uh, but certainly not conducive to education, um, as we need it now. Uh, but you can see that, uh, Glen, with its evaluation, has some serious, serious needs. And so that's part of the reason that as we evaluated facilities, uh, the Facility Advisory Committee, which we'll talk about in a moment, brought recommendations to the board. And each of these campuses were evaluated. You can see Central Lakeview and the Oaks Campus there on the far right, which is now vacated and will be, uh, we have plans in the works to use that facility. Uh, the only part being used is the back part by CTE. And then you can see Glen, Lincoln, and Lone Star were graded as well. And our elementaries. And certainly, the board has seen these, so I'm not going to belabor them. But each were graded. And then we actually graded our support facilities. One is not owned by the district. That's our transportation facility. That's owned by the city. But we we share that with the city. And so, uh, as we evaluate all this, uh, part of the question is how do we, as stewards of the taxpayer dollar, use the current facilities in a responsible and trustworthy way? And we'll be bringing a plan, a formal plan, to the board very soon to address some of these failing facilities and how we plan to use them or vacate them. So another quick, uh, bit of information that's important is to just address and look at the area tax rates. And we look at the ISDs, you can see that San Angelo at 81 cents is the lowest in our immediate area. Some of these schools are smaller. Well, they all are smaller than than San Angelo, but certainly geographically, uh, our neighbors are important to look at. And then we can look at West Texas ISDs that are about our size that we might compare with. And you can see that San Angelo is at nine cents as a debt service rate as compared to our, uh, comparable school districts in our size in the region. Also, the 10-year INS rate, we know, has dropped, and it has dropped because of paying down debt and refinancing. And we can see the overall school tax rate over 10 years has dropped 43 cents, and that's a result of state's tax compression through property tax compression as well as paying down debt. So, um, I think it's worth pausing and just saying thank you to the community and the board for a successful election in November, which kept the tax rate the same, by the way. I think that's important to mention. It was a restructuring of the tax, uh, uh, rates for the schools, but it did generate significant revenue for the district without raising taxes, and we're thankful for that. And I think it's worth also just saying that the the district and the board were very conscientious to adopt a balanced budget and present something to the taxpayers that did not increase their taxes. So uh, that was that was a good thing in the fall. So our Facility Advisory Committee met in the fall, and this committee, made up of more than 60 members, uh, met six times and then eventually seventh to, uh, uh, recommend to the board, toured campuses and donated lots of time and energy to consider about $628 million worth of projects that had been presented. These projects included things on this sheet and the ones to follow. You'll notice in the second column, there's a one and a two. That was a priority given, uh, as we evaluated, and some of those made the final recommendation and some did not. And I'll give you example on this page. If you look at the next to last row, you'll see elementary rightsizing is a two, and that included Bel Air, and that included Holloman. And then below that, also kitchen and cafeteria replacements at Glenmore and Santa Rita. Those ultimately did not make the list, but the one above those two, the number one, uh, did. And so that's an example of how this sheet reads. And you'll see here, $35 million worth of deferred maintenance was really the worst of the worst things made priority one. There's a lot more to that. And so the committee evaluated eventually, uh, from the 628 million, whittled that down to projects that they recommended to the board in December. And these are the projects. And I'm going to slow down just a little bit and make sure, uh, I know the board knows this, but we're just going to take a moment because tonight is a very important night for you. Safety and security upgrades for all campuses in the district would be touched. New construction of Glen El- Glen Middle School, and the committee is looking at that as an onsite replacement. And then campus additions and renovations. You can see here on this she- uh, slide, you'll notice that at Central, a new auditorium, kitchen, dining commons, which can also be used as lobby for gym and auditorium. New gymnasium and renovations for culinary arts and health sciences and technology, CTE courses. At Lakeview, construction of a new CTE wing, renovation of an existing CTE wing, and construction of a new fine arts area for the Mariachi program. And, uh, also included later, you'll see some, uh, athletic upgrades on that field on campus. Elementary rightsizing includes Fannin finishing that project or at least taking a second phase. Uh, McGill, second phase, and then Crockett Kitchen Cafeteria and Classrooms. So, uh, and then that carries us to the next page with $35 million worth of, um, deferred maintenance projects. And then you can see some athletic renovations and improvements. Renovating locker room areas in Lakeview. I think everybody knows that there's areas of that school that are not air-conditioned and, um, not not accessible and haven't been updated. They're original to the building prior to the new fire around 2000. And then you can see also renovation of locker room areas in Torino Gym, the T-Gym at Central and primarily addressing issues related to our cheerleaders and some groups in a dressing area that is also a public bathroom during games. So there's a crossover with the public, and we're not comfortable with that. We'd like to fix that. Artificial turf track tennis resurface across all facilities. Middle school gymnasium renovations, bleachers and paint, plumbing, locker room repairs, and then the Lakeview Athletic Projects. And specifically there, uh, that turf field needs replaced. There is one telephone pole with two lights that illuminate their practice field in the dark mornings. We want to add a parking lot, add lighting, bleachers that are like sub-varsity bleachers, probably one side of the field that would seat less than 1,000, but, um, big enough to to host maybe a sub-varsity uh, football game or varsity, uh, soccer. And then, um, restroom ticket building. They don't have adequate restroom facilities there. If uh, you all have been out there and you're on that field, you know that there's no place for people to go to the restroom and a small scoreboard. So just really uh, common sense upgrades there at that at that facility. And so if you break that down, you can see if the board chose to call a bond election for May in one proposition, this is what the breakdown would look like. If the board chose to break down two propositions, this is an idea of what it could look like, although the board could separate out any of these projects into Proposition A and B. I mean, the board could call three propositions if they so chose, but, uh, this would be an example of two propositions. And this might be worth our time to look at what it would look like. Now, it's this is not final, and it's certainly not all-inclusive, but you'll notice at Lakeview, if you look at the current Lakeview facility, this is what it looks like. And you can see the practice field on the north side there with no bleachers, no lighting, no parking, no restroom, et cetera. Um, if we were to proceed with this project, first, let's look at what happened to the Lakeview campus over the last couple of decades or several decades, in fact. You can see by date and color coding what buildings were added when. Let me start at the top. That dark blue is just simply the tennis, uh, building next to the tennis courts. You can see the majority of it was in 2000 after the fire to replace the main building. But what would we do if if the bond were to pass? Well, we would, uh, upgrade those locker room facilities. We would add the Mariachi addition and the new CTE addition, and then do the work we talked about, uh, on the fields outside the school. Same idea for Central. You can see the current Central Campus and the, uh, the people, the orange Bobcat people that are walking between buildings uh, during rainy weather, et cetera, and flooding. And don't forget safety concerns. Here are the buildings by the decades. And if you're looking for the blue building, that's a little tennis building just south of the tennis courts. Kind of hard to see. You can see Tucker and the little welding shop, uh, they were constructed or renovated in 2010. 95, you've got the gymnastics gym there in orange. If the bond were to pass, this is what it might begin looking like, and this would be a Phase 1. So this would be what the bond in May could cover. The next couple of slides would actually be a long-term plan for another bond down the road and a third bond down the road. So ultimately, and I'm go- I'm not tying a a date to this, but let's say 25 years from now, uh, these projects might be completed. See a Phase 2 to try to build that campus uh, as one connected building so kids could move about regardless of weather, adding practice fields to the campus where the students wouldn't have to be bused to the stadium. And then finally adding, and those fields where you see softball and baseball, I doubt that they would end up there, but an idea is all of the fields on the campus with a new auditorium, new gymnasium, new academics. You might ask, well, why wouldn't we just build a new Central on another piece of property? And that's a great question. And the answer to that question is, uh, a new high school of that size today costs about $400 million. Kind of let that sink in a little bit. Uh, if our community had passed this in 2007 for 117 million, we would be two-thirds of the way paying it off. But we did not. And so here we are, looking at this as a, an additional cost. Now, I think that conversation is real conversation for us. So that's what it would look like down the road if our community chooses to fund Phase 1 this May, Phase 2 years down the road, and ultimately Phase 3. Glen Middle School looks like this right now. And these are the years that Glen was built, constructed over time. This bond would transform Glen into a campus. You can see on Johnson Street, the main building would be accessible too. They would flip the design essentially. And then the practice field would be where the building is now. This could be done on a a different piece of property if the board and the community so choose to do it, depending on cost. And I'll tell you, uh, this is a great design. It'll work. It'll be very disruptive to Glen for a couple of years, but when finished, would be a wonderful addition for the community for, you know, 50 to 75 years. Fannin Elementary. This is what we did out of ESSER funds, and you can see that the purple addition, what was was, uh, added without a bond election. And what we're looking at is if this bond election were to pass, it would replace the small and inadequate cafeteria and kitchen kitchen area with what you see there on the top of the page and a new, uh, office library area on the bottom of the page there. And then the original building would just have to be considered for the next bond that the community, uh, considers to finish that campus at Fannin, but this would be a step two. McGill, kind of that same conversation. This is what was done internally by the district. Really is an anomaly, by the way, to be able to do a project this size without a bond. Uh, and it probably won't ever happen again due to the fact that, uh, you know, the pandemic, we don't expect to to happen for a while, but those emergency relief funds allow the district to build new instructional facilities. And then this would be what the bond would fund. Uh, kind of a big step two for McGill. And then maybe down the road, uh, demoing some of those old buildings, but certainly a step in the right direction. Crockett. Crockett has a very inadequate kitchen and dining room area, if anybody's been in that area. Uh, this would replace that. And then the red would be demoed, and we would add a few classrooms as we consider consolidation of elementaries over the course of the next few years. This would give us the opportunity to house more students there and, um, kind of right-size that campus. So the total cost of the proposed projects is 397 million. It really was over 400 million, but because of some of the renovations needed for Glen, if Glen is replaced, that brought it down to 397. And so as a taxpayer, we should be asking the question, what does this mean for us? This would be a 27 and a quarter cent increase in our interest in sinking tax rate per $100 valuation on a home. And so we know we have a homestead exemption of $100,000. The, uh, the state's actually considering raising that. But right now, it's at 100,000. So if you take a $200,000 home, you subtract out the optional homestead exemption, and you divide by 100, take that number and multiply times the impact, it's a $272.60 a year raise to our citizens in taxation. And if you break it down by the month, $22.72 per month on a $200,000 home. Don't forget, if you are one of the more mature in the audience and in our community, your tax rates are frozen if you're 65 and older. And the last day to register to vote is April the 3rd, and Election Day is May the 3rd. And really, that's kind of the overview for the board. I just wanted to revisit some of this to make sure that everyone was on the same I just wanted to revisit some of this to make sure that everyone was on the same page as you all consider what you're going to do tonight with this call. Thank you. Any questions?
Any, I'm sorry, this is your part.
No, any questions? If not, we'll proceed with a last report from Dr. Gomez on high-quality instructional
Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, and members of the board, the district has been sharing communication from House Bill 1605 and the state's new instructional materials review and approval, or EMRA, process. This evening, we will begin more detailed conversations with the overview of House Bill 1605 and key requirements. The bill expanded the state's role in curriculum development and instructional materials. So as you've heard and as you will see, this creates new criteria in the overall process. The criteria includes TEACs coverage, so standards alignment, quality, suitable for the grade level in this subject, free from factual error, no harmful content and other statutory compliance. And what's really key here is the parent portal compliance. There are financial incentives for schools with the new process, including additional funding on top of the instructional materials and technology allotment, or IMTA, which you're familiar with, for districts that choose to use state board of education-approved materials. That's the $40 per student that we discussed and an entitlement and an additional $20 per student for printing. And we'll go over that in greater detail after we highlight the overview. It's really important to stop and pause for a minute on the parental access to the curriculum. This bill requires local school systems to establish a classroom instructional material review process, and it requires that publishers make any EMRA-approved textbooks accessible to parents on the internet. You'll see this boxed portion. This is a new specific component, and this is what really expanded the state's role in the curriculum development. This bill required the Texas Education Agency to develop state-owned textbooks that are subject to approval by the State Board of Education. It does also provide optional teacher training for districts to utilize the materials and a related grant for educator prep programs. We've previously talked about Strong Foundations and the Lasso Grant. In regards to the TEACs review and revision, our Texas Educator Code of Ethics requires us to teach the TEACs. We don't get to always agree on them, but we are required by statute to teach them. We do, however, input, and this did provide for more flexibility and revision in the schedule. A key with this is the bill mandates that state-approved reading materials emphasize systematic phonics instruction and moves Texas to a science of reading approach. You've heard the district, as we've shared, our reading academy training schedule and the overview of that, and specifically how districts are not allowed to use any materials that enforce the three-Qing phonics materials. Another key component, as this bill aims to reduce the teacher workload, is that teachers cannot be required to use biweekly planning time to create initial instructional materials unless there's a supplemental duty agreement with the teachers. A supplemental duty agreement would be additional pay on top of their contractual pay. Now, we know in education, there are a lot of specific terms, so as we go forward, it's important to have alignment with the agency's terms. So as a recap, instructional materials are any materials used to convey the TEACs for the subject, including but not limited to lesson plans, textbooks, student materials, and online learning supports. The Open Education Resources, or OER, are materials that reside in the public domain or have been released under an intellectual property license that allows for free use, reuse, modification, and sharing with others. State board-approved instructional materials are any instructional materials that have been through this EMRA process we just highlighted and have been officially approved by the State Board of Education. These materials are considered High Quality Instructional Materials, or HQIM. And state-developed OER are any instructional materials created by the Texas Education Agency. State-developed instructional materials are considered Open Education Resources, which then leads you to the graphic that you're seeing with Bluebonnet Learning. In just a minute, we'll go through the timeline, but let's talk about what you're familiar with, with the instructional materials and technology allotment. You're accustomed to this. As I just shared, with House Bill 1605, a district has two additional entitlements for consideration. So a district has their normal instructional materials and technology allotment as set forth by the bienniums for each student, and those are biennial. Balances do carry over. If a district elects a state board-approved instructional material, there's an additional entitlement. That's the additional $40 per student. You'll notice that does carry over annually. And then lastly, is the state-developed Open Education Resource, OER entitlement for printing. But you'll notice there that $20 per student is each school year, and unexpended balances do not carry over. I'm going to pause for a second. I can see that y'all are reading that slide very carefully, and we continue to address that. But I really wanted to highlight that as you hear additional funding, and that outlines the additional funding. So just kind of recapping in a narrative form, the district's regular IMTA is the biennial allotment of money from the state instructional materials and technology fund to Texas public schools. The state board-approved instructional materials entitlement is $40 per student per year. Notice in the bold, that's $40 per enrolled student. So specifically, if a district adopts a resource that is only a specific grade span, that allotment is not limited to that specific grade span. It's still per enrolled student for the district. And lastly, the state-developed Open Education Resource entitlement, the $20 per student per year, to help offset printing cost. As districts make decisions with instructional materials, in order to qualify for those additional entitlements, there must be an Open Educational Resource Instructional Material Transition Plan. So this transition plan is required when a district initially adopts state board-approved instructional materials for any grade level or subject, or if a district expands implementation. Now, we've previously shared the grant opportunities. If a district receives the grant, then the Open Education Material Transition Plan is not required. Receiving the grant automatically qualifies a school district. So let's look at the breakdown a little differently. Okay, some people like checkboxes, so a district gets in their funding, those IMTA funds that can be used to purchase materials. Then, when purchasing any state board-approved HQIM, the new formula funding is available. If no purchases are made, the funding accumulates in a school system's account. And lastly, when purchasing printed Bluebonnet Learning materials, districts can access annual OER materials funding. We just have to recap because there's a lot of vocabulary, there's no vocabulary test with this, but again, to recap, this is all centered around high-quality instructional materials. So while a district doesn't get to pick or choose, we do get to provide input on the TEACs, but we are required to ensure full coverage of the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills. The number one thing we have to look at when making recommendations for instructional materials is the standards alignment. We also are obligated to align to the English Language Proficiency Standards, or the ALPS, and the pre-kindergarten guidelines. We must show that we are implementing research-based instructional strategies, and most importantly, in public schools, we support all learners, including students with disabilities, emergent bilingual, and students identified as gifted and talented. And lastly, we must consider the grade level suitability. For high-quality instructional materials, frequent progress monitoring is essential and required through embedded and aligned assessments. There are teacher and student-facing lesson materials with implementation support. And lastly, as we've discussed, they must have approval from the State Board of Education and the EMRA process. So here's the timeline, which brings us to where we currently are, the evolution of TEA's instructional materials. You see in the upper left-hand corner, the COVID emergency release versions are the CER. San Angelo ISD is currently using Amplify for K-5 RLA, Eureka for 3-5 Math, and Carnegie for Algebra I. These resources, the digital versions, were accessible through CER, but we know that teachers and students need print versions. With the transition, last spring, the board approved the final proclamation process as we know it. So you all approved resources for a number of content areas, from K-8 Science, Biology, Chemistry, Physics, K-8 Technology, which we are required to teach technology TEACs, and a number of CTE pathways. That was the last proclamation cycle. So here you are in school year 24-25, as we're preparing for resources for the 25-26 school year, and that's where you hear and see Bluebonnet Learning. So Bluebonnet Learning, which will become available with the 25-26 school year, covers K-5 Reading Language Arts, K-3 Foundational Skills for the Explicit Phonics Instruction, K-5 Math, and then secondary math from 6th through 8th, and Algebra I. According to the agency, Bluebonnet Learning addresses the common problems they see statewide. Research has been explicit on the number of assignments and materials that are below grade level. Bluebonnet Learning ensures access to grade-level text and assignments every day for all students with the requirement that teachers are not required to create. Many materials that cover the TEACs are not aligned with research on how kids learn, so we've specifically discussed the science of teaching reading and that we're required by statute to not teach the three-Qing system. Bluebonnet Learning products are TEACs-aligned and designed on research-based instructional To lessen the workload for teachers, teachers need resources they're not having to create. The agency says Bluebonnet Learning includes comprehensive resources for teachers to cover 100% of the TEACs. This last one's very important as we're experiencing a pipeline with a teacher shortage. In fact, San Angelo ISD has seven clinical teachers this spring. So as the state has reviewed instructional materials, many do not have continuous improvement based on Texas educator input and to help prepare a declining workforce coming into the field with an increase of alternative certified teachers. Bluebonnet Learning collects Texas educator focus groups and uses the feedback from such groups. In the area of mathematics, many current mathematics instructional resources have isolated practice and skills. They prioritize that procedural skill influency and their below-grade level task. Bluebonnet Learning, according to the agency, concentrates time and effort on going deep on the most important topics for the grade level. You'll hear that referred to as the productive struggle. That's to balance the conceptual understanding, procedural skill influency, and application. Again, the key component here is all students working on grade-level tasks. And the opportunity for practice, discussion, yes, there's talk in mathematics classrooms with this curriculum, representation, and writing. For some specific examples on Bluebonnet, there is explicit practice with handwriting and letter formation, including explicit practice with cursive letter formation, direct instruction and practice with phonics. And then, it's very important to highlight the importance of building knowledge and providing experiences for students that may not otherwise have the background. You'll see this graphic here shows the interdisciplinary reading topics, and it covers areas from science and social studies as well as literature. I think it's very important that we spend some time on the role of religious source materials and knowledge and coherence. As I stated, the Texas State Board of Education sets curriculum standards through the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills, which outline how religion should be addressed in public schools. Religion can be taught objectively and academically, but educators are required to stay neutral. They are not to provide devotional practice. The State Board of Education includes religious influences, requiring students to learn about major world religions and their impacts on civilization, law, and culture. Such teaching should be part of the historical and cultural education, ensuring no preference for one religion over another. As we look at Bluebonnet Learning from K through high school and the elementary grade levels, it focuses on foundational skills which build from grade to grade. I'm going to pause because that's a busy graph. As the curriculum moves up to secondary, 6th through 8th Math and Algebra I, it builds upon that earlier learning to prepare students for higher-level math, aiming to provide a cohesive and effective experience from elementary to high school. As a district makes decisions on instructional materials, it's important to remember the following. Districts have local control and discretion when selecting instructional materials. So when selecting and how they implement. So should a district elect any instructional material, they also have local control how those resources are implemented. However, the district must stay true to the standards alignment. So for example, if a state board-approved instructional material was adopted, then any modifications to that curriculum would be made public to parents. To give you a frame of reference... To give you a frame of reference, the CER, or COVID emergency response versions of Amplify, were written for approximately 185 instructional days. Blue Bonnet Learning is written for approximately 165 instructional days. For the 2526 school year, the district has 170 instructional days. That does not include any additional assessments that a district would also write in their pacing guides. So if a lesson was modified, that would have to be taken into consideration and made for parent access. The State Board of Education reviews materials, including the open education resources, and decides what high-quality material is available to schools. Parents have a right to review all instructional materials, and parents have a right to temporarily remove a child from a class or a school activity. We currently have that in our district. We have systems in place for alternative reading assignments and alternative assignments. The same would apply in this case. With what's always important is direct communication between the parent and the teacher, the teacher and the principal, and the principal with district leadership. So as we continue to have conversations, this evening was just a recap and an overview. In alignment with the requirements set forth by House Bill 1605, the recommendation does recommend the adoption of Blue Bonnet Learning as a state board-approved instructional material for our school district. There is no perfect resource. It's about great teachers. Is this the best resource that the district has available at the current time? The district believes it is. For the standards alignment with the TEACs and the compliance, meeting the terms of highly-qualified instructional materials, its support for diverse learners, its ease of implementation, as the district has been using Amplify and Eureka for the last two years, would not be something new for teachers to learn at those levels, the assessment and progress monitoring, and lastly, what is so important is parental and community influence. So we will continue to have further conversations, but it's important that we all keep in mind nothing is perfect, but what matters is the most structured resource for our teachers. We don't want any teacher in the district to lose their ability to have the craft of teaching, because teachers are the true difference-makers. You probably have a bunch of questions, so I'll open it up for questions and answer this evening and also next Tuesday in the regular board meeting.
Questions for Dr. Gomez? Certainly a lot of information tonight.
Dr. Gomez, what is a state foundations grant?
That is the Lasso Grant, which provides implementation and planning.
So do we have to have that state foundations grant? Do we have to put in that, what do you call it, Blue Bonnet Learning if we do get the Strong Foundations?
Yes, we do.
So it has to be added in there?
I just have a few clarification questions, and I know this will be more of a discussion next week, I just want to make sure I have some things right. Partly for our community, but anytime you say "agency," it's the Texas Education?
Yes, sir, the Texas Education Agency, not the local education agency.
I just want to clarify that. On, I know that Amplify Texas, or Amplify, the product for Texas next year, assuming there are no lawsuits and it all comes out, et cetera, is Amplify Texas, which is Blue Bonnet. That is true.
Yes, sir, that is true.
Eureka becomes Amplify Math?
Eureka becomes Blue Bonnet Learning Math, which is currently Eureka. The difference from the COVID emergency response additions that districts were able to access, they were not written to the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills. So remember, an educator in Texas, their first requirement is to teach the TEACs. The resource helps them deliver that instruction.
So a couple more questions, and I know you've said them all, but I just want to make sure I'm on the right page. So with House Bill 1605, if we adopted a curriculum that did require teachers to create curriculum, that would be an additional stipend that would come out of our MNO tax rate?
You are correct.
How many material options are state board-approved at the moment as high-quality?
There is a list. I can also provide that list on a specific slide, because there are several.
But the only OER, or the open education material?
The only, when going back to this slide here?
Yes.
State-owned is Blue Bonnet Learning.
Okay. Sorry, I've got one more, a couple more. Who, as far as our policy, regardless of what curriculum we adopt, the, we would still have the local control to, for parents to opt in, opt out, discuss what is in the curriculum, correct?
The parental transparency is a requirement of the bill. Yes, sir, that is correct.
And that is actually more transparent than the current curriculum we have now?
Absolutely, because the current material, remember that the curriculum or the TEACs.
Right, which is all we have really to show people at the moment.
Correct.
We do not have lesson plans.
And this requires that, if, and is for the transparency for parents to access with the parent portal.
And who writes STAR?
Outside vendors that are paid for by the Texas Education Agency.
And although it is one test, the Texas Education Agency writes STAR, correct?
Correct.
And the, and just, I just want to make sure I'm right on this. And the, so the test that we are going to be graded upon as a district is the Texas Education Agency. And Blue Bonnet is the Texas Education Agency's curriculum?
You are correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I had all that right in my head. That's all for me for tonight.
Further questions?
I have a few questions. The first thing is the $20 stipend for printing. What does that look like? Because what I'm thinking is that's...
It's approximately $234,000 annually, based on our current enrollment.
Who prints all that?
The district. So for, through individual campuses and through our teams of curriculum writers, including teachers, instructional coaches, and district staff.
So they're literally going to print off all this curriculum from a printer at the schools?
That's why there's additional funding currently. While we were acquiring the print materials that we had to pay for, because we only had the digital access, the district was encumbering the expense to print materials.
And then, am I understanding correctly that if we get the Lasso Grant, then the board does not get to vote and we automatically get, get the Blue Bonnet, take on the Blue Bonnet curriculum? Is that correct?
So it's a requirement of the Lasso Grant Strong Foundations implementation that Blue Bonnet Learning is used. How, the district has applied for those grant funds. The grant funds don't cover any of the materials. They cover the professional learning component. However, if a district did not adopt Blue Bonnet Learning, they would not be eligible to receive the grant funds. And that notification comes from the state on February 20th. There are 200 awards for the entire state.
And then, with the Bible-based pieces that are infused into the curriculum, I'm wondering if the teachers will be trained on how to handle those conversations with students who might have diverse backgrounds?
That is part of the professional learning, because while you specified Bible-based, there are other religions as well. It is not just Christianity. And so that is a part of the training on internalizing and implementing the resource.
Sorry, I have a few more questions, too. And then, with the, I understand that things can't be removed from the curriculum without quest, without telling the parents. What if a parent wanted, what if a teacher wanted to expand on what's in the curriculum?
There's tight pacing, remember those days I told you? So to expand would not be following the pacing, which is the requirement from the district to cover all of the lessons, and those ongoing embedded assessments are the district's checkpoints.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So they're giving out 200 grants of that, of that Strong Foundations Grant? What happens if this is adopted and we don't get that grant?
So that's for the professional learning component. That's not for the resource itself. The district has been utilizing Eureka and Amplify for the past two years and paying for the professional learning. And when the district could be potentially using IMTA resources and funds from professional learning, both local funds and federal funds. So if the district did not receive the grant to have the additional funding for the professional learning to support our teachers, the district would develop a plan to provide the professional learning support. The transition from the resource is very minimal with having used the resource for two years. The difference is, the current versions were part of the COVID emergency response and were not written specifically to the TEACs. The Blue Bonnet Learning version is specific to the Texas Essential Knowledge and Skills that our educators are currently required to teach, and that the district has had to have lessons to cover TEACs that were not addressed from Amplify and Eureka with the current versions. Because remember, regardless of a resource, educators must cover the TEACs.
Okay, so what I, so the Strong Foundations Grant, if we don't get it, we still have to use that, we still have to implement that Blue Bonnet Learning?
No.
We don't?
Correct.
If we don't get the grant?
Correct.
And if we do get the grant and we choose not, we have a choice, is what I'm saying?
You don't have a choice to take the grant funds?
And then when, and also, when did we, when did we apply for that grant?
We applied for the grant in December.
In December, okay. All right.
I have a few things. I would, I think you told Dr. Kingman, I would like to see the list of other options.
It was also in a future, it was a prior Friday fact, but there's a lot of information with House Bill 1605. It was a whole chart. It's also available for anyone also watching and listening on TEA's instructional material website.
Okay. How would, because when we, the slides were fifth, sixth, how would we do that for honors?
So we already have, it depends specifically on honors. That's a pretty broad question, because we could get in a whole topic of conversation about advanced mathematics and the new statute requirements there. So it would depend specifically to the grade level and the content area, but we are still required...
So we would still merge in math like we do now?
Well, so there's a whole nother bill with higher mathematics for high-achieving students. That could be a full other board presentation. So I can definitely address that, include additional information, because no, it's not going to be exactly like it is now with the new requirements. But for those of us that have been in the field for a while, it is something that we've done previously, including accelerated instruction where you're covering entire grade level one semester, the next grade level the second semester, all based on a student's star performance in previous grades, once we transition from elementary to secondary mathematics.
So right now Carnegie is in algebra. Is Carnegie under the Blue Bonnet?
Yes, it is.
And most, 80% of the stuff is on a laptop.
The current version, because we only have the digital access, the emergency response access, this would include the purchasing of the materials for students and teachers.
Okay. And this is just, I'm just, this is just a concern. We talked about the Christian part of it.
Yes.
Training our teachers. That, to me, is going to be real important. You said a statement, the teachers are to remain neutral?
Yes, ma'am.
That is very, I don't know how I feel about that statement. So I think that is, is going to be something that I want to dig into more.
And that's also the current requirement, Mrs. Duncan. That's not a new requirement. That's how the state board has it.
True. And then, like always, a parent can remove their student. I remember, we showed a movie at Glenn one time, and two of my parents came. On one of the slides, under, I forget what grade it said, Letters from Heaven. It was, keep, go backwards, yeah. Okay, fourth grade, Letters from Heaven. So I'm just saying, as a parent, am I gonna, I don't know what that means. So am I going to be able to see what that is before it's taught?
Yes, ma'am. That's the parental access to the full curriculum in the parental portal.
And if it's taught, let's say for a week, and I'm not a fan of it, I, I can remove my kid for a week from ELAR?
The district still has an alternative assignment. They will have an alternate, they don't get a free pass for a week. It's the district's obligation to teach the standards aligned with that literature piece.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure everyone understood.
Because another parent, we could use an example in second grade, which focuses on a Jewish celebration. There could be a parent who doesn't want their child to have information around that literature piece.
But none of this is out for us to look at yet? Or is it?
You can see samples on the website.
Okay, okay.
Including the, the rubrics that were used and the grade appropriateness for each of the grade levels. That was part of the EMRA process for any material to be state board-approved. The suitability.
That's all for now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Additional questions for Ms. Gomez?
I had one more, I'm sorry. I was going through my notes and I had one more STAR. So when Dr. Kingman was asking you the questions about who writes the STAR test, and you had said TEA writes a STAR test, and TEA wrote this curriculum, right? So they're, so they're...
So it's the agency's state assessment?
Right.
And it's the Texas Education's state assessment?
Right.
But actual staffers that work at the agency don't write either.
I, I understand that, I didn't mean that. Is this the first time we've had a TEA-written curriculum?
It is the first time. That's why I highlighted that box on the House Bill 1605 overview, and this bill expanded the state's involvement in curriculum development. That's a key component for them to have a state-owned textbook.
And I, I know that this is outside of your pay grade, but the STAR test is 13, 14 years old, and we're just now writing a curriculum that goes along with the STAR test?
We're actually in the STAR 2.0 redesign that took effect, too, so, yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a comment on that, because about 15 years ago or so, some of you remember the CScope conversation around the state. It was a clearinghouse, a collection of best lessons that teachers were sharing with one another, and the state really came out against it, because there was a communication that maybe the core curriculum was being included in that. But really, it was just a group of teachers sharing best lessons with one another, and the state attacked CScope. And I was able to actually sit at a table with some state leaders at that time and heard the conversation kind of bending this direction. And we find ourselves here now, the state has created, if you will, their own CScope. And what they've done is created lessons that are based on best practices. And, and so that's why, that's what we've, we've arrived at, because the state leaders saw that there needed to be something that every teacher in the state could access for free. That was, that was best practice.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Gomez.
Dr., Mr. Dinnell, I'm gonna, if no one else has questions, we're gonna do a quick update in our agenda. There, we are trying to take care of our community members, and Item Six is consider order calling bond election for May 3, 2025. So we're gonna jump ahead to that, and then we will come back to our finance routine reports, if everyone on the board's okay with that. So, Item Six is basically the option for our board to call bond election for May 3, 2025. I know... I know Dr. Moran has presented some material and we've had material over months from the facilities committees, from Park Hill, from engineers. Does anyone have any comments regarding that before we talk about the administration's recommendation? Well, I got, I got comments, if no one else does. So, um, okay. So I have to write things down because I don't do well if I don't. But, um, I think it's important as a board that we realize that if we elect to call a bond tonight is the last time as board members that we can express our opinions on the needs and importance of this bond. This is a big decision for our community and school district. And personally, my family has been blessed to have a wonderful experience in SASD and in San Angelo as a whole. It is my hope and dream that our district can provide that experience for all students. Our district is made up of exceptional students, teachers and staff who work to make a difference in students' lives and to help promote the hopes and dreams that parents and students share for their future. As we move forward, we must understand and explain to the public that funding major school projects relies on local community support in the mechanism of a bond. Our district has embraced financial transparency. We've been able to provide balanced budgets and teacher raises. We have made difficult decisions to consolidate elementary schools and close the Central Freshman Campus. We have begun to right-size elementary schools by strategically using COVID relief dollars. We are also looking to further decrease operating expenses by eliminating older support facilities that do not directly promote student access. Yet with all those things, the only way to attack the major projects ahead, ahead of us is through a bond. As a parent and a board member, I know that we need to be preparing our district for the next 10 years and beyond. The failure of the last six out of seven bonds has led to aging facilities with deteriorating infrastructure. Over 67% of our facilities are over 40 years old and 24% of our buildings are over 60 years old. Architects, engineers, district staff and a committee of over 60 community members who dominated over 700 hours of their time have spent months assessing facilities in our district and formulating a plan for the future of SASD. Greater than $600 million of needs over the next five years were identified. The committee presented a plan for the next 10 years at a cost of $397 million. This recommendation addresses our largest needs. It provides security and renovations that protect our students in the realities of an increasingly broken world. It provides space for job training that can adapt to the industry needs in our region like welding, culinary, child development and health science. Previous bond proposals were criticized for large, narrow-use sporting facilities. This bond looks to efficiently improve spaces for extracurricular, but also allows those same spaces to be used as classrooms. Glenn Middle School has a failing foundation, a poor safety profile and an expensive design to repair. Our facility committee recommended against a $30 million Band-Aid and instead recommended to create a new facility that will provide for the next 50 years just as the current facility has done for the generation before. As we have seen, looking back at previous failed bonds, the delay in funding these projects leads to an increase in price tag for the future. Since the last bond approval in 2008, 17 years ago, our board and previous boards have aggressively worked to lower tax rates. State assistance, as well as intentionally working to lower the bond debt, has led to slower school tax rate in SASD than almost all of our neighboring and peer districts. Even with a lower taxable value, our rate is a fraction of most schools. Our tax rate after the last bond was $1.35 per $100 valuation. We are currently 54 cents lower at 81 cents per $100 valuation. Our bond debt rate is 12 cents lower than Midland, 16 cents lower than Odessa, 21 cents lower than Abilene and 41 cents lower than Lubbock Cooper. Here in the Concho Valley, our tax rate is 15 cents lower than Wall and 25 cents lower than Cristovol. Our community must have the resolve to invest in our youngest citizens so they can grow and keep San Angelo strong. A community that does not invest in its schools is not flourishing. The quality and funding of the public school system directly reflects a city's economic health, infrastructure and priorities. Well-supported schools foster a skilled workforce, reduce economic disparities and ensure long-term community prosperity. Successful schools are supported schools and supported schools will make it easier to recruit businesses, new teachers and young professionals. It will also protect, protect the value of our homes, which for many of us is our most valuable asset. Whether you are in the camp of keep San Angelo the same or we need to grow, both require the children in our community to have a safe place to go to school in buildings that create efficient learning environments and future-ready graduates. For those reasons, I personally believe we should call a one-proposition bond that best positions San Angelo ISD and San Angelo for the future. Any other comments?
Dr. Kingman, in support of the, uh, the 2008 bond that, that was, that work was done. Some of the elementaries that were affected were at that point in the 64, 65-year age range. Now, they're in the, they're in the 80-year range and they're still going to function for another 15 to 20 years because of the support that we got in 2008 for those elementaries that, uh, that were there. In, in 2018, that failed bond, we were going to affect several other elementaries at that point and that bond failed and now we are at an impasse to square it with those facilities.
Well, first, I just want to, the, the facilities committee, I know y'all sacrificed over 700 hours of time. I've been there and that's what I did before. I'm doing what I do now. On this bond, community, you know, my dad voted in '08. And he voted for every other bond. His grandfather voted for every other bond because they knew that as a community, that's how you take care of things. You're taking care of your community. And what y'all came up with is what you came up with because somewhere along the road, we lost sight of that. I feel we've lost sight of that as a community. You know, you sit there and look at these old bills. I think my, my, I remember in '08, my dad goes, "Are y'all gonna get a new Central High School?" And I go, "Why?" He goes, "Son, I voted for it back in the 50s." You know, and I didn't think I was going to be there for 30, 40 years, you know? So, and it's just, um, but yeah, it's, it's time. I think it's time as a community to, to reinvest for our kids, for the kids. My kids went through, through SASD. Thank you for saying that you went through SASD. Everyone here has gone through SASD and here's the thing that always I don't understand is a lot of these people, and I don't want to say, I mean, it's just, there are people that say, "It was good enough for me back then, it should be good enough for them today." But here's the thing, when you were in it, it was new. Or even, you know, not as new, but it was a lot better, in a lot better shape. And I've never understood that. I want what's best for our kids. That's what I want. And that's what kids want. I mean, you know, everything, technology, everything, everything's moving so fast now. And we gotta get them the, the, the stuff they need for learning. So, you know, that's, that's what I have to say on this. But y'all did a wonderful job breaking all that down and looking at things and, and, uh, so yeah, yeah. I, I think it's, it's a good thing to go ahead and move forward on this.
Um, my, I guess my words are, why not now? I mean, I live by, we're not guaranteed tomorrow. So why not try for this now? And why not give our kids what they deserve? Um, as a teacher, for many, many years, I don't know how a child can get out of that car, walk into that school and you not want to give them the very, very best that we have. I did grow up here, I didn't graduate from here. But where I did, they just passed a bond and, um, they're getting rid of my elementary. And I'm just so excited for them, for that, my, my hometown, south of Houston, that those kids are going to have something brand new, something innovative, something that will give them the tools to compete when they go into the workforce or whatever they have. So my comment is, why not now?
Uh, I'm gonna add on to that, Pam. Um, you said, "Why not now?" And my immediate thought was, and if not now, when? Um, we haven't passed a bond in, we passed one bond in 30 years, is that what you said? Um, and you, yes, obviously, we're, we're talking about a bond for kids, but I see it more as a bond to further our community. We're not just, we're not, yes, we're, it'll be a new school for our ki, new schools for our kids, new spaces, new, um, you know, new, new facilities. But more than that, it's a, it will build a place for kids to grow up and be educated and then be part of an educated community. And that's, we don't want our kids to, to feel less than or be less than because of what our community chooses not to do.
I, I think y'all, y'all said everything very well, but I want to, I want to say that we understand it's a lot of money. Like, I remember going to the meetings and going through this process and, you know, you're hearing these dollar signs and you're, you're looking at everything and it's, it's, it's a lot of money. There's no doubt about it. The, we, one thing we can't control is the cost of stuff. You know, a lot of this stuff is based off what architects say is going to cost and these things all get bitted out and will, you know, they're, that process will work itself out. But, but they know how much this stuff costs. Most of these things, most of these costs are probably going to be going back to the city in one way, in one, one shape or another, whether it's contractors or builders or whatever. It's a, but we can't control the costs. What we can control is, is what we have is what we want, what we need to do for these kids. What is best for the kids? Do they need new facilities? In my opinion, absolutely. We cannot continue down the same path that we've done the last 50-something years where we, uh, for whatever reasons, we do not pass these bonds and then things just get older and more expensive. It's just going to cost us more money down the road. There is no reason to push the thing down the road further. I think that the money is a lot and it thinks it can go a long ways. I wish we could push it further. I wish that $400, $400 million repaired a lot more than it's going to do. But I think eggs are expensive and I don't know how to fix that either. So I think that it's super important and I'm, I really appreciate all the time that the committee spent to do this, that we went around to the schools. It's crazy to go through my own, or, you know, go look at these schools and they haven't changed one bit since I've been there. And that was, you know, not that long ago. I don't want to say my age, but, but it was still, I mean, they had not changed one bit, some of these places. And that's sad because as my kids come up, I'm afraid if we don't invest in these schools, then the schools will look, will be even worse shape when I was there. And we just can't have that. So thank y'all for y'all's putting us time and, and I'm excited about the opportunity to do this.
Any other board comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
Dr. Kingman, I make motion to approve an order calling a bond election in the district with one proposition on May 3, 2025 in the amount of $397 million.
So I have a motion from Mr. Dindel. Do I have a second?
I'll say.
A second from Dr. Mills. Any other board comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes 7-0. Um, thank you all who contributed to this, who are here tonight. On that, we're going to move back to our...
Finance report.
Finance report and do our routine reports.
Thank you, Dr. King. And we'll move forward now with financial reports, uh, beginning on, uh, page nine is our bills and accounts report for December. Uh, page nine, we're showing a $53 million in unassigned fund balance with 11.7 million, uh, figure in restricted at that point. Page 12 shows our revenues and expenditures for December. Uh, that's a third, technically a third of the year we should be at, so we're at 33%. Uh, our revenues at this point, uh, are 33% and our expenditures are slightly ahead at 36.3%. Pretty close. Uh, any question? That is the December revenue expenditure report. Page 14 through 32 is our December checkbook, all the checks that we've written in December. If there are any questions on that, anybody have anything that they'd like to clarification on or, um, if not, any, if you do have a question, make sure you get that to Dr. Brandon and he'll respond with, uh, an explanation of that check too, so. Page 34 starts our January bills and accounts. Uh, page 36 shows an unassigned balance again of $83 million with $11.7 million restricted. Page 39 shows our standard revenues and expenses account, somewhere should be around 42%. Uh, with a, uh, that's going to be a five-month, uh, figure. At that point, we show 50% of revenues. That's because of the, uh, increased tax collection in, in, uh, uh, the local revenue in December and January. So that puts us slightly ahead. Uh, and most of that has come in, uh, at this point. And then we'll see, uh, the state, uh, continue to keep us even as we move forward. Uh, and our expenditures were at 45%, which is still slightly ahead of, of where we should be, but within control. Any questions on that? Page 39, our revenues and expenditures for January. If not, again, page 41 through page 60 is our January checkbook. All our checks we wrote. Any, if there's any questions about that, uh, please let me know or, uh, query Dr. Brandon, he can make sure that we have that clarification, uh, moving forward. No questions about that. We can move to page 62, which is our December monthly investment report. Again, the district's total invested funds at the end of December were $70,601,000. Total interest earned for the month was $284,231. Interest earned in the general fund, uh, in the general fund was $248,668 with interest, interest rate pools varying from 4.54% to 4.77%. That's our December monthly investment. Our January monthly investment report is, at January, at the end of January, we had district's invested total funds of $84,378,000. Total interest earned for that month was $325,174. Interest earned in the general fund only was $282,114 with interest, interest rates varying between 4.35% and 4.59%. Those are the monthly investment reports. No questions moving forward. Page 72 to 77 contains our general revenue, general fund revenue, uh, adjustment. Total, total revenue adjustment is an increase of $4.8 million. Uh, and then page 76 shows that reflected in our adjusted budget. No questions about that. Page 78 is our December tax collection. Uh, in 2023, we are at 41.35% of collected rates. 2024, we're slightly ahead at 46.49% of collected rates. And that's in overall, including the, uh, delinquent taxes. Page 79 through 80 is our reports, uh, on POs that are over $20,000. Several things listed in there, we got a fuel, we have some security concerns that we're taking care of. There's an HVAC repair at one of the schools as we move forward. And then there are also, there's some occupational and, and physical therapy expenses that we're taking care of. And if there are no questions on those POs, that should include our finance report for December and January. Thank you, Dr. King.
Thank you, Mr. Dindel. Um, all right, we have one more, uh, action item on our agenda this evening. It's, uh, to call the 2025 trustee election for single-member districts 1, 2... It's to call the 2025 trustee election for single-member districts 1, 2, 3, and 4. Dr. Brandon's going to help us with that.
Oh, that's not a good sign. Dr. Keeman, Dr. Moran, board members, every other year, San Angelo ISD and the City of San Angelo hold a joint election to elect school trustees and city officials. The expense of conducting the election is shared by the City, San Angelo ISD, and other entities holding elections. The City, San Angelo ISD, and the other entities contract with Tom Green County Elections Administration for the joint election. On May 3, 2025, eligible voters residing in single-member districts 1, 2, 3, and 4 will elect one trustee to fill a four-year term on the San Angelo ISD Board of Trustees. Attached are several documents for approval. Administration would recommend approval of the Order of Election for May 3, 2025. Approve the inter-local agreement, joint election with the City of San Angelo and the corresponding resolution, and approve the Elections Services Contract with Tom Green County with the corresponding resolution as well. And it kept the prices the same. That's always a good thing.
Any questions for Dr. Brandon? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to call for the school trustee election for May 3, 2025, execute the Order of Election, the inter-local agreement for joint election, the Elections Services Contract, and the resolutions.
Do I have a second?
I second.
So I have a motion from Dr. Mills and a second from Mrs. Duncan. Any other board questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes 7-0. All right, we do need to go through our proposed agenda for next week, which will be a Tuesday meeting because of the holiday on Monday. We have some recognitions, consent items. First will be our bills, accounts, and financial statements for December and January. We'll keep that as a regular. We'll consider the proposed amendment that was in our financial report this evening. We'll keep that as a regular. Consider House Bill 1605 and instructional materials. We'll keep that as a regular. Consider the 24, 25 district and campus performance objectives. That has to be at our meeting next week, so, in a presentation, correct? And that will need to be regular as well. So, Mr. Henry, if you'll come up and help us with bids 20-009.
Bid 20-009 is our maintenance, transportation, and miscellaneous supplies bid. This bid allows us to add additional vendors throughout the year as needed, as long as they're approved through the board. This one is one for an adder for the vendor, Breckner's Trucking and Equipment.
Any questions?
This will allow us to purchase auto parts, different miscellaneous transportation needs.
Ms. Henry, this is just in addition to the list that's ongoing for
Yes, sir.
Maintenance and repairs, is that correct?
Correct.
Make consent unless someone has a problem with that. So, can you tell us about the fine arts instruments, Mr. Henry?
campuses identified musical instrument needs during the budgeting process. The district, the purchasing department, with the assistance of directors and fine arts staff, issued a request for quotes for these instruments. The RFQ was sent to eight buyboard vendors specializing in musical instruments. Seven submitted pricing, and one, one vendor submitted a no bid. The summary of bids included alternate options as attached. The administration recommends approval of the bids presented in the attached bid tabulation. Total cost of instruments is $154,283.84. This was a line item bid. What we did was we sent out our needs to these different vendors, and then they all provided us pricing, and then we went through line by line to make sure that they not only met what we needed, but then also had the lowest cost. All the boxes highlighted in green are the items that were awarded to those individual companies.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Henry regarding the fine arts instruments? Everyone okay with consent? All right, let's talk about our playgrounds and shade structures.
The district's revitalization program has identified the need for additional outdoor amenities, including playgrounds and shade structures. This request for quotes will establish pricing for the purchase of a new Lamar Playground, the relocation of existing San Jacinto Playground, and the construction of a shade structure at Central High School. The RFQ was distributed to four buyboard vendors specializing in playground and shade structures. One vendor provided pricing. The administration recommends approving the pricing as detailed on the attached tabulation. Total price for this is $95,507.82, and the awarded vendor would be Playgrounds, etc. of Midland.
Ms. Henry, have we done business with these folks in the past?
We have done business with them in the past. They put up the playground at Goliad, the one at San Jacinto, and a couple others here in the district. Very easy to work for, good people.
And I know we only have one bid on this, but are these prices in line with the playgrounds that cost us previously?
Yes.
A quick question. Where will the San Jacinto Playground be relocated to?
I believe it was Glenmore.
Glenmore specifically because of the pre-K classrooms, and that was, that playground was for smaller students.
I was thinking that they would need it, so thank you.
Everyone okay with that being consent? All right, Mr. Henry, you got one more?
The last one is purchase of new vehicles. The district is currently in need of two new expeditions. These will be, will primarily be used for staff and student travel. During the 22-23 school year, bids for new vehicles were prepared and received by the purchasing department. These bids were extended by mutual agreement between the vendor and the district. Both bids were awarded to Jim Bass Ford and allow for purchases of new and used vehicles as needed at a negotiated price. The administration recommends purchasing two 2025 Ford Expeditions for $58,837 each. Total cost for this will be $117,640, or 74 cents.
Any questions regarding this? Okay, we consent? Everyone else make that consent? That will be the completion of our agenda for next week. We do need to go into executive session under Personnel Matters, item 551.074. We will do that and then be back as quick as we can. All right, we have returned from executive session. We took no actions, we took no votes. Our announcements are that our finance and pre-agenda workshop for March is March 10, 2025, and our regular board meeting in March is on March 24, 2025, and with that, we are adjourned.